Call this meeting to order. This is the town of Kensington, June 12th Town Council Meeting. First item on the agenda is to rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item up on the agenda is a moment of silence. If there's anyone who we want to lift up? Okay, if we could just bow our head for a moment of silence. Okay, thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I know Susan sent them out, I believe, on Friday, and I've not seen any chatter on the email regarding any corrections. Is everyone good in this though? Can we make motion?
I move that we adopt minutes from May 8th, 2023 Town Council Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Alex, is it possible to hit gotcha on the screen?
Gotcha.
Got it?
Alex, you're really being recorded, right?
Yeah. All right, so first item on the, next item under Mayor and Town Council, we get to acknowledge that council members, Connor Crimmon and Darren Bartram were declared the elected winners, but the Board of Supervisors of Elections, in accordance with our town charter that lets us waive voting instead, and just declaring winners when we don't have any more than two people running for two seats. We had a great little ice cream social, so I think people appreciated that. It wasn't a huge group, but it was a nice turnout. So, thank you Connor for the idea of doing that. That was great. So, congratulations, another two years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is it too early to ask if you're going to run again? All right, so, does anybody have any questions regarding the announcement? I don't see anybody raising their hand, so we'll move on to number two. Matt, do you want to talk about this one?
Sure, Mayor Council, we received a signed variance request from the property owner at 10-800 Connecticut Avenue. The property owner, Amy Hamilton, along with her broker, real estate broker, David Edgely are here. The signed variance request is with regards to a limited duration sign. We allow replacement up to 60 days. The request is for an additional 90 days. The property is located at the intersection of Connecticut Avenue and Farragut Avenue. This is also the property that is anticipated to be taken by Montgomery County Department of Transportation for the Summit Avenue Extended Project. And Ms. Hamilton and Mr. Edgely are on Zoom. If you have any questions?
This is the for sale side?
Yes.
Council, do you have any questions for our town manager or for the applicant? Don't overwhelm me.
I guess I just want to know a little bit more about the basis for the request. Why does the uncertainty of the property with respect to being taken in four or five years justify a variance for 90 days currently? It just seems like we're, the schedules are a little off. I mean, I get the point about clarifying the need, but if we don't get the need, if we don't get clarification from the county, I mean, the sale goes, if it sells, it goes through. I would hope the person who buys it would understand that it's in the, right, in the plans route for Summit Avenue Extended, but given that, if the buyer presents an offer to sellers consider acceptable, that could happen now or it could happen in three years. I just don't know why, I don't know how that justifies the 90 days extension.
So, if I may, I'm David Edgely and with sheer partners representing Amy in the sale of the building. I think, I think the capital project, which is really kind of a remarkable undertaking on the part of Kensington and the county in partnership and probably with the state, is not connected with the sale of the, of the building. Certainly, the master plan and information on the, the project is in our database that we share with all potential buyers or tenants of the building. But, you know, my client would like to sell the building, and given the economic times that we're in, the challenge is that we're experiencing very high vacancy rates, we're experiencing high interest rates thanks to a number of factors, including the Federal Reserve. And so, that has caused a delay in the potential reuse by another potential business of, of the, of the building. And while it's ambitious and certainly supported, and I'm not sure there's certainty in when the, the project might kick off, so, given the fact that there are alternatives to the stormwater issues signed for the project, we'd really appreciate the recognition of that and the opportunity to keep the sign up to allow the current owner to exit the building and let a future owner wrestle with, with it. We've, we also welcome the, the, kind of the, the work that we've done so far at very early stages with Matt regarding how the, the project might benefit and fulfill some public purpose in and around Kensington's goals, including, including an adaptive reuse of the building and site that would benefit the citizens of the town.
And you said it's currently on LoopNet?
It's, it's, it's everywhere. LoopNet, CoStar, a number of other proprietary and public databases.
And how long has it been listed on those databases?
I knew you were going to ask me that, and I signed one and didn't pull that up. Amy, how long has it been? About a year and a half?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, we had to sign up for like last year, and then we had to take it down. So, I think it's been about a year and a half in total, but the sign has not been up that entire time.
Right.
Come down for a little while.
Okay. And if you had to speculate, you know, I evolve on the sign driving down Connecticut Avenue versus seeing it on any of these commercial property sites, what is the, what drives the sales here?
Yeah, I'm glad that you asked that question because, you know, the, with the advent of, you know, the internet and, you know, people's propensity to search and so forth, most properties, most properties see a lower percentage of sign hits than, than, than the databases. In this case, the sign is located at a million dollar location. And what I mean by that is it's seen by very, very large traffic counts. And we've gotten probably 30 to 40% of our calls off of the sign itself. And that's why we think it's so important and why we ask for, you know, town support to continue to have the sign up. It's, it meets all other specifications. It's just, it's just taking too long, and we apologize for that.
Okay, I'll, I'll let others chime in in just a minute. Would it be fair to say, Ms. Hamilton, that you're not actively opposing Summit Avenue Extension based on the property being in the right of way?
No, I mean, I think it's a, a great project, and we've actually had, I think, two buyers who have done some research on the property, and they were hesitant to purchase the property because of the storm water management location. And Dave, you can talk about that a little bit more.
Yeah, right. I mean, in discovery, the, the, we referred the, the, the potential buyer to the county and the, actually, the county official, who I don't know who it was, was reluctant to, to, you know, he shared fully what the, what the future use of the property was, but didn't want to be acknowledged as the information source. And we, we, we fully understand what might happen. We do think that if the right project comes along, that there are alternatives to, you know, the stormwater might be a little bit more expensive, but might really benefit the town by, by virtue of, of alternative projects. So, we're looking for a buyer that is the right size, that understands the future project, that hopefully supports it, but also understands that the, the use could be taken away by the project. We have no effort to hide, hide the future of the potential capital project. And, you know, I think it would be a great asset if it does happen. It would be great also if another alternative would allow for the economic activity that occurs on the site and the road.
Yep, thank you. I, I'll just quickly say at the end, I appreciate the response. I think based on staff's recommendations and sort of unique posture of the project, I would be inclined to support it, but see what other people think.
Anybody else?
No, just, Dave, your memory is correct. I looked it up real quick, the original listing on LoopNet, at least with August of 22, so just over a year and a half. I mean, I appreciate Darren's questions. Those were a lot of mine. I too, given some of the factors involved in the uniqueness of pending capital projects, would support an additional 90 days.
I, I mean, I think I also support it. I just wanted to raise one point of connecting the dots here a little bit with the recommendation from the, the staff memo that you're exploring, working with the county on, how that could possibly be developed with some stormwater, with some mixed use, so we, housing, so. I don't know. I just wanted to say there's, there's the ULI cap coming up, and we should definitely raise that issue for this specific parcel and have them explore that in that process.
We met with Montgomery County DOT at the end of December, trying to ask them about purchasing the property. You know, we were told there were no funds available, and in kind of discussing this project, and David brought up that Polte was looking at it last month, or previously, but he told me last month, you know, we're thinking that the property, it's a little large for what they're planning to do on the stormwater management within the extension. Maybe they can do something else on the property where they build the stormwater into a housing project that we could get behind. And we had mentioned to David, and, you know, you know, Brookside Apartments didn't work out, but maybe there could be something down the road for there. And the county just, you know, we want to take this opportunity to talk with them, figure out what their requirements are for stormwater management. Maybe they can redevelop the site a little better than how they have it planned now, and ULI would be a great opportunity to do that as well.
We'll make sure to flag it in that process.
Yeah, unfortunately, the county really can't think out future. They just throw it into, you know, on a list, and that's about all you get.
Yeah.
So, and then the list just keeps moving on. And any thoughts?
No, thank you, Matt. I was going to ask about what you just described, you know, based on the staff report, and I think based on the situation, supporting the variance makes sense.
All right, all we need is, there's no questions from the audience? Not seen any hands, not seen any hands online?
We just need a motion to support. The formal resolution will be next month, but it's a limited duration sign, so it's not a permanent sign, so we'll have a resolution.
What do you want to, you want us to go ahead and move to the resolution?
Yeah, just no, make a motion, and the resolution will be introduced in July.
Okay. Okay, all right. So, if somebody would like to make a motion?
I move that we support the variance for 10-800 Connecticut Avenue.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. We will have the resolution at our July meeting.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, thank you.
All right, let's move on. Farragut Avenue, University Boulevard, Traffic Island Installation, or the Pork Chop. If you're hungry. Matt?
Okay, I should defer to Councilmember Bartram on this, but MCDOT put in the Pork Chop a few years back. They're using flex post delineators. It was a temporary resolution. The Traffic Committee, now the Mobility Traffic Committee, had reviewed this previously about a permanent structure kind of held off, but we received a request from a couple of residents on Farragut Avenue. The sketch plan that is within the council packet and available for the public is what our traffic engineer, Joe Cutro, has designed, and we are just looking for guidance on if we should move forward with the permanent structure or not.
It doesn't currently have the cross crossing, does it?
There's some, yeah, it's back here.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I think it's a, I think it's a good design. I think it's something that would benefit pedestrian bicycling safety. I have one small concern about cars ripping around that corner to the right, and maybe the crosswalk being hidden, but I didn't go out to check the line of sight there, and I'm sure Joe looked at that. And only just to comment that I personally would prefer to see it to see the blue part be grass or vegetation rather than concrete, as it's noted. It could be one or the other. But otherwise, I think it'll be a nice addition to making Connecticut Avenue a little bit more walkable.
Yeah. Our direction would be for grass. It saves a little bit of money on concrete, but also helps. There was a prior sketch that, that the MTC reviewed. There were some issues with it with the egress ingress for the Farragut Avenue property in addition to a storm drain, so there is a slight difference from what had been seen maybe two years ago from, from MTC.
Yeah, I'm, so, I spoke with one of the residents on Farragut, thank you, Anna Sacks, who's just questioning when the permanency of this may come in. I'm not a traffic engineer, playing one for a half a second. I did go out there, because this building needed so far back, there is a really good line of sight, but I'm sure.
Hey, Dave, about the riddle or the?
The Riddle Building, as you come around, because they have that small parking lot in the front, you, you have time to be able to.
Oh, so not the riddle. You're talking about the Lick, John Lick's building?
Yeah.
Okay.
But that was going to be my point is, you know, the desire by residents of that block of Farragut is for vegetation, just to match the other type of traffic islands, like Long Pliers Mill, whether it's a mix of grass and, you know, knockout roses, and just, you know, same standard that is kind of used in other parts of the town.
Yeah, the brass, short brasses. Ian?
Yes, I, I think it makes a lot of sense to move forward with this plan, and I I also think that rather than concrete, it should be vegetation of some kind, and would also support not just grass, but something that, you know, maybe is helpful for pollinators, it provides a little more interest, and also then the crew doesn't have to go mow just one tiny spot. So, and I'm sure I have members of the Greenscape Committee who would be happy to offer their opinions along with our landscaper on what it could be.
Not dwarf mandinas?
No. Nothing that is, that is non-native or invasive. Once birds get a hold of the seed.
Okay, I'll tell Jason. All right, Darren, any comments?
Yeah, it's going to get a lot of salt.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Salt tolerance, yeah.
You know, as the one member here who does whip around that corner almost every day.
I was thinking, you ask kind of Chevy Goldfield.
I, I, I was sort of of the view that having a crosswalk set in so far was a good thing, but if the engineer thinks that it's okay to have it out by the street, you know, so be it. One, one of them makes the drivers apparent to you, or the pedestrians apparent to you before you turn. The other gives you enough time to brake when you see them right in front of you.
Is that, what is the width of that? Is that the four feet, or is that, I see a four foot PVC sleeve, so is that blue section four feet from the sidewalk?
Oh, no, the nose down, that's.
No, I understand what the, but that section of blue, you're not, what is your buffer between University Boulevard and the sidewalk?
To the house, three feet.
I, I don't know. I can ask Joe.
It looks like you could, you could slightly adjust it to get a little bit more separation.
I think it's just a debate mostly of where it is now, which is thirty some feet off the road.
So, he'll, this one chalked out before it's, before it's, so we can look at it.
Would there be, would there be trees? Is a tree an option?
Not, not in that location. We're not going to want to plant anything that's going to get higher than 36 inches in height from the street level for sightline issues.
Sure.
If you wouldn't mind just asking one last time, just that decision to move it out, is it? Yeah, in other words, go ahead with that as planned.
I'm just curious, why is it, why is it only five feet wide? Could it be, could it be a little wider?
The sidewalk width within the Pork Chop.
Yeah. You can make it wider.
Because the, the crosswalks are eight feet, obviously, you wouldn't need to eight feet, but that way bikes and pedestrians could use it silently.
More concrete?
No, that's the only thing.
Maybe to six feet instead of five?
It's something to consider, but it's a trade-off with the amount of concrete.
Yeah, it's not an issue.
Versus vegetation.
But I know when you look at the, the sidewalk that we put in front of the townhouses on Knowles, I mean, that thing's a monster. What is that, eight feet?
It was done without a permit, so.
You don't know.
Just stop work order on it.
I know. Okay, well, that is too wide.
Yeah.
That's a do. I'd just say, I don't want it that wide. You can have sometimes a little bit too much.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Like I said, so, yeah, Joe and I will chalk this out. This is probably August, September-ish. I, I wouldn't anticipate that we get to it before then, but we might be able to chalk it out before then. And then we can just take any, any comments.
Okay. All right, is there any questions from the audience? Not seeing any hands. Do you want a motion to go ahead and proceed?
Fine, yeah. I mean, we'll just put it, we'll just.
With the questions to?
Yeah, I mean, we'll just put it in the next concrete contract we have. And then address the, the sidewalk issue and the crosswalk issue.
Right, somebody want to make a motion?
I can move to proceed with the installation of the Farragut Avenue, University Boulevard, Plug Island concept.
Formerly known as.
Really want that in the minutes.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. All right, moving down to number four. All right, just a reminder that we will be having a town organizational meeting as required by our charter. That will be at five o'clock on July, I'm sorry, what was it? Eight, tenth? Tenth. Does that work for everyone? I know we had a little bit of correspondence in the. Okay, so five o'clock, and then followed by our, which should take about maybe 45 minutes. We will meet with the District 18 representatives, and then followed by our town meeting at seven. So, do you guys want a little snack somewhere in there?
Something big.
Yeah, sleeping bag. Okay, so could you guys, or just maybe some?
Yeah.
Light snacks, nothing heavy. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Yeah.
Not quite the big Talia's meal, maybe something a little, yeah. All right, does anybody have any questions regarding the organizational meeting? Okay, not seeing any. All right, so let's move down to number five for the alcohol waiver in St. Paul Park for Juneteenth celebration. Matt?
Saturday, June 17th, this coming Saturday is the second annual Juneteenth event. We need a waiver from the council to allow us to sell alcohol within the beer garden. We provided a waiver last year, and we're asking for one again.
Seems to work out well. I know we've done that with Bling Park as well. Is there any questions regarding the waiver from the council? Any questions from the audience regarding the waiver for St. Paul Park? I'm not seeing anything. Can I have a motion?
I knew that we support the waiver for the ability to serve alcohol at the Juneteenth Celebration this Saturday in St. Paul Park.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so let's do a quick rundown from Town Council members for their, some reports. Darren, you want to start?
I'll just thank the, the town for the ability to serve again for two more years. Finished some projects that we started, break some ground on some developments that are coming. Hopefully, finally tackle some overdue code restrictions, their code provisions that we are, we've been working on. And I would like to think that after 12 years on the council at the end of this term, that I will hand the baton off to, to somebody new.
Oh, already?
I hope.
Transition term.
Yeah.
Taylor, when you're moving back.
You make good companies.
I did. Yeah, mad one, yeah. But anyway, okay. All right, well, thank you, Darren. Okay, Ian?
Well, we've already heard a little bit of a preview for Juneteenth this Saturday, but I want to make sure everyone knows about the second annual.
Are we having events?
We'd never know by the. You may have seen some signs. The Saturday from 12 to four, join us in St. Paul Park. The rain date is Sunday, but so far. We're going to have many different musical performers from the DC area, including jazz, brass, a cappella, DJ, we'll have a dance group based in Silver Spring. And like last year, there will be a number of living history portrayals, including Harriet Tubman and others. So, it's going to be a great family event, very educational. We encourage lots of people to come out. Many, many, many people in the community have been involved in planning this, including a lot of support from our town staff. I think virtually every member of the staff, so we're very appreciative of that and hope to see a lot of you out there this weekend. And we also want to thank Connor for allowing us to use his house as needed for, for event support.
I'm glad that we could provide the green and electricity.
All right, Matt or Nate?
Do you want me to give an update on ULI cap?
Yeah.
So that I can preview what we're going to vote on? Okay, so Connor and I have been working on this Urban Land Institute Technical Assistance Panel, which will provide a panel of seven to 10 experts to help us conceive of and envision the Summit Avenue Extended Connecticut Avenue, University Boulevard area of town, part of our, you know, part of our downtown core for how it can be, you know, moved beyond just a traffic flow project, a traffic alleviation project in areas of potential economic development, bringing improved bicycling and pedestrian access and safety, and so on. So, we've now got the final details of, of the questions that will be asked and answered in that process. We've got dates hammered down, and we've also have a contract that we are going to be voting on tonight with the ULI cap folks. I did want to flag just a, for everyone, council, it'd be really important to please, if you're in town, to attend the parts where they'll need our input. It'll be two days on July 12th and 13th, so just flagging for you. It's not clear exactly what and when they'll need our input, but as I understand it from previous processes, information they've shared with us about others that have been done in neighboring jurisdictions, and I don't recall, I wasn't involved with the sector plan one.
Darren, you were the only one, I think, that participated.
So, you probably were, were you interviewed by them, maybe? No?
I, I don't think.
Okay.
I participated in a Warner Circle one, but it was an abbreviated version.
Okay, they'll likely interview us, and we'll give them a briefing book. They'll interview key stakeholders, transportation partners, development groups, also people in real estate, traffic engineers, community groups and organization businesses. So, we'll, we'll be putting together a briefing book for the panelists. It's about 50 pages that we've got to stitch together. And that will be the basis of their input for their initial input, and then they'll do interviews, and they'll, they'll do fact-finding when they're here for those two days. It'll, it'll involve a presentation to us in the beginning for what they, you know, what they're finding, or at least their initial thoughts Finding or at least their initial thoughts uh from the background information. And then there'll be a presentation back to us as council uh at the end of it to hear what their. Initial recommendations are. They'll make a report available to us that we can then post. Um, on our website, make it available for public. For input and feedback when when we think it's the right time. So. That is, I think, everything that I wanted to put to flag. Is there anything else that they missed?
No, I mean, it's almost perfect to. The rest of the council, the biggest list that we can use help with is the briefing book Nate mentioned, and then. We will also be soliciting these stakeholders to be in involved. So Nate ran through that list. But as we consolidate the idea of who to invite, right, there's people at the county level, people at the state level, our business community, um neighboring civic associations. Um, we'll just make sure we come together with a comprehensive list.
Okay. All right, good. I'll just remind everybody that we did talk about this at our, was it the April meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
And that we supported moving forward with this um. Um, with the tap and uh to tonight, we will be just voting on the final contract that we've been working on with our town attorney as well as ULI.
Great, thanks. Um, just. One up, two updates on the bicycling and pedestrian bicycling access and safety working group. We had a. Yeah, I'm sorry, guys.
Workshop.
Workshop. We we had a workshop for our uh bicycling and pedestrian priority area designation. I see someone in the audience who is present, so thanks for coming. It was very good turnout. We had, I think, thirty or forty people. I didn't see the final list of people coming in and offering. Feedback. We had sketch sketch tables set up where people could offer their ideas on supporting amending some of the recommendations that seem to be coming out of there for. The priority improvements that we can uh make within town to improve access and safety. So that plan will. Come out sometime in September or October, but they're now incorporating all of that rich feedback and and improving, you know, their. Conceptualization of the recommendations and they'll share us uh in early draft probably sometime in the coming months. So thanks for everyone for participating, people who came out. Um, and and the town staffer and and group for helping to set that up. I I did wanna note a a a note of thanks to our co-chair for the working group, Chris Zappi, who has is is stepping off as co-chair. They're moving out of town, unfortunately. Um, and Alan Simon stepped up to be co-chair along with me, so I wanted to flag that and thank both of them for their service. Andrew, you want me to do sustainable Kensington real quick? Okay, last but not least, in a well Kensington, we are progressing on our uh application for. Our Sustainable Maryland designation. We have a lot of work has gone into it. Uh, but from the members, many of them who were here last meeting, I wasn't here, but who presented. We have a few more actions to complete, but I think we're, we've gotten initial feedback from the the person that's Sustainable Maryland who leads the program that. We're on track and everything looks good. Uh, but we have a tremendous effort of community volunteers that are working on that, and I think we'll get it in in time for June thirtieth. I mean, we will get it in time.
Yes, we will. And just a special thank you to Alex Marini, who's been critical to the whole project and working closely. With um Caroline Morrissey to to get all the documentation together, so that is that has been a big effort.
Yeah, thank you, Alex.
Well, I I'm really in awe of you guys because this has been brought up before previously and and, you know, it it. Yeah, I knew how much work it was gonna take. So, you know, when it didn't happen, I wasn't surprised because, but it it takes not just the work on behalf of the councils. And and staff, but to engage the community. That's a tough thing to do, and you guys really managed to do that. People have really stepped up to the plate, and I think that's why. You know, we are headed towards success where some of our other. Um, you know, municipalities have registered, but they've never been able to get it to that point. And it's mostly a lot of the bigger cities because they have the staff that can help push that. So um, I mean, you guys have done a great job. I know we're not at the finish line yet, but I mean, I know, but I mean, it's it you guys have been amazing. Of course, of course, it helped that when we were going through the list, we already had quite a few points.
Yeah.
That helped a lot. It wasn't like starting from scratch.
Yeah.
But um, so I I I thank you guys for for this effort.
Thank you. It's it's really a testament to the community. There's so many people who are passionate.
They really, yeah, they really, really are. So, and that's what it takes. So. Connor? Did you have something else to do?
No.
Uh, I'll start by echoing Councilman Bartram just to say thank you for the opportunity to serve again. Uh, for two more years, I will say, well, not whether I ever get to twelve years, Darren. Uh, I'm at the end of my sixth. I'll be at the end of my eighth. And honestly, there are times where it feels like it's like two weeks ago.
Really?
Yeah. At times.
Okay. Rare occasions.
At times, it does feel like it's been much longer.
Um, well, geez, Ben will be graduating from high school if you.
That.
Make it as long as Darren has.
Um, and and but it's been fun to be a part of building the community that we wanna live in. I look at little things that myself with it. Many other people contributed to like the pavilion. And how popular it is and just realizing, I didn't have this sooner. Um. So I am just deeply appreciative and uh and for the wonderful council, because it is like Tracy just went over, all the things that are. Being accomplished is through just an active and engaging and uh it's it's a fun council to be on, so. That's why it's easy, is because it's working with you guys. It's ever Darren. Oh, yes. Um.
Uh.
And another minute to one minute, um, we will come back around later. There'll be some ask of the staff. Uh, um, but starting the conversation now with a group of parents on the north side to make some improvements to St. Paul Park. For accessibility and to make that park more of an accessible park. And so we have some initial sketches. We've got some initial. Ideas around apparatus, but we're gonna start to more formalize that. Um, and then just come forward to. Get a sense of the grants that are available, timing, and then um. And even if it, you know, just making it iterative. And so um, as I think about it, and there was a group get together of. Folks who have a adaptive needs and watching them not be able to use all of it, but then envisioning what it could be is really cool. The thing I I want, you know. It just strikes me as something that is very Kensington. So. Um. So be prepared.
Susan, when is open space? Do you remember when there? Um, well, the community parks and playground is like, I think at the end of August, you have to submit it.
Okay.
And that's just a hundred percent paid if they pick you.
Right.
So that would be a goal?
Yep.
Try to have the prices?
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect. Um. And then lastly. They can't, you know, roses and butterflies. Uh, traffic is back on Metropolitan.
It's back everywhere.
I know. Um, but people had seemingly forgot the back way, and now they remember it. And you know, some days are better than others, but the result of that is the peel off traffic at. Kensington Parkway, yes, Wheatley quite a bit. And even St. Paul, because it's backing up well beyond Wheatley. Um, and so the observed behavior that I see. And this is kind of in the school, you know, bus drop off time and then the peak park time. Is people wanting to get around that traffic, um, cutting the stop sign at Oberon in St. Paul. So as we look at improvements, whether it's with sidewalk or other things. Um, I mean, one has to be uh, you know, raised crosswalk, some some other apparatuses to slow down. So. Um, that's it.
Right? Um, I don't have too much to add. I did wanna bring up that um. The uh historic preservation will be uh hearing uh tomorrow or the fourteenth, Wednesday night. Um, the Warner Circle Mansion for the hop. So there'll be um. Unfortunately, they did not get notices out to uh the same number of people that they did previously, so um this kind of came up a little. Um, snuck up on some people when they did find out about it. It is just for the hop, so uh we're gonna ask um Carl to do a courtesy review when they come to seek permits from us. On the project. I, you know, I don't think there's anybody here that wants to hold up the project in any means. Um, I do think it was an oversight. Um, the uh historic preservation Rebecca Balo has, you know. They might have missed that, but um we'll have an opportunity for the public to review it. Prior to arguing them a permit, so. Um, does anybody have any questions uh regarding the um? Reports from the council? Yeah, not seeing any hands. All right, so, oh, and just a reminder, uh, the council or council member Ingles, Bartram and myself will be headed to M and L for Ocean City at the on on. June twenty fifth. And I think you're coming back on Tuesdays, right?
Okay.
Yeah. And um, it's a great um conference, so uh and. Yeah, no, it's really good. And you, well, you didn't have, you've never been, okay? Um, the the new uh executive director put on the uh the Maryland Municipal um Mayor's Association meeting, and it was phenomenal. It was the best one I've ever, ever attended. So I've got high expectations for this particular one. Not that Scott Hancock did a bad job, but you know, you get new blood in there. It kind of um. You know, shakes things up that needed to be shook, so um. Excited about that. Okay, all right, so let's move on to uh.
Uh, I know you will, but if you will grab whatever new things are out around the adaptive playground.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's yeah, bring your um, bring a bag. We'll let you.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they they have lots of cool gadgets. And stuff, and you're like, why didn't I get this? Anyway, okay, um. Matt, you got anything for us?
Yeah, two quick updates. Um, Alex and I met with Brutus and Associates last week. Uh, Brutus and Associates is our contractor for the bridge repair project. Uh, they will providing, will provide us with an updated schedule uh later next month. Uh, we're looking for the construction RFP to go out probably a little later than we anticipated, so sort of maybe October, maybe we're looking at December or January of twenty twenty four. Um, and Cass Engineering has completed the survey for the Oberon sidewalk. Um, project, uh, they'll be staking the right away out. Uh, we have a few other questions we need to clarify with the utilities. Um, and with the traffic engineer, and then we will hold a public hearing or a public meeting on site. Um, everything's taking a little longer. There were some issues with the survey. Um, and we're dealing with utilities and and contractors, so it's taking a little longer than we anticipated, but uh we'll notify everyone once the public. Uh, meeting has been scheduled.
Okay, I would like to schedule two meetings, maybe one during the day and then one in the evening. I think it's important to that we offer at least two.
Yep.
Opportunities.
Do you have a rough timeframe?
Um, probably not before the fourth.
Go there.
Um. Well, we we need to walk it one more time. We need to get some clarification from Pepco on the utilities. We'll have to move some utilities. And we'll have to uh speak with Verizon. There's some movement of some Verizon communications as well. Then and then now we're also planning, if the project move forward, uh, we're planning some storm drain improvements on Oberon as well.
Hmm.
So, it's a quite a large project for us.
Okay. Anything else? Bridges and sidewalks, is it? Is there any questions uh regarding uh Matt's report? Okay, not seeing any hands. Alright, so let's move down to ordinance resolutions and regulations. I'm sorry.
Um, because we won't have a meeting before then. We'll have the Fourth of July Bike Parade, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Though we should know.
That up. Yes, we will have the Fourth of July Bike Parade. Yes, Mark Hudson's already already talked to Mark. And Val Deal, and uh we'll be uh setting up on that morning Tuesday, but it's Tuesday, right? Tuesday morning. Yes, we have had it already on one e-blast. There's a, there's something up in the kiosk, so we have not forgotten about the bike.
Yeah.
Yeah, but maybe.
On your ice cream?
We should have plenty of ice cream, yes, our popsicles or whatever, and I don't know whether we'll uh we have to be able to put out the um. We'll we'll borrow water from uh Connor, I guess, uh, the the um tent that you got, the spray.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll work that for Friday, too.
I'll touch.
Okay.
You might have to test out.
Okay. I'm missing ten.
Yeah.
One day we'll have our own water system over there that we.
The problem is the fire hydrants aren't really in a good location.
In a good location. Yeah, so one day that won't matter.
Yeah.
Uh, I see a question from Joe Campbell. Joe?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I was curious to know why the uh bridge contractors' work is being delayed to perhaps early next year. What's what's uh what's going on with that? We've been talking about this. Work for quite some time now. So I thought everything was on track for it to begin uh sometime this year.
So the contractor Brutus is the uh engineer that will be doing the review, design, and contract management. Um, they were able to do an onsite review of the three bridges. Um, they're just compiling everything. It's gonna take a little while to put the report together, so. We can put an RFP out for bid for construction. Um, they just don't think they're gonna have it done by October. Um, and they gave us the estimate of December or January twenty twenty four.
What does their contract specify in terms of getting that report prepared? Was it October or was it later?
It was not. It's just a preliminary schedule within the RFP that they put out the bid, um, and we're looking at a slight delay.
And uh. Couldn't they refer to the state's work on these uh bridges? They're they're fairly extensive, as I recall, what the state had prepared in terms of its report.
Uh, no, they cannot. There's uh structural reviews that were will be required for the design.
And how do we know that uh early twenty twenty four is gonna be the uh? The definite start date or is this gonna be?
It won't be the definite definite start date. What they're providing is a schedule that will provide when the RFP for construction goes out, and that's when the construction RFP will go out. We'll bid it out, we'll get a contractor, and it will probably take them another three to six months to get MBNE permits. So we're not looking for anything really until spring or summer of next year.
So it's a a year away at the earliest, perhaps?
Most likely, yes.
Okay. All right, let's uh move down to uh ordinance resolutions and regulations. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, council, before you this evening, is a resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington authorizing a contract. With the Urban Lands Institute to establish a techn- technical advisory panel for the strategic review of economic development and activity and mobility improvements within the town. The contract is for twenty five thousand dollars. It was previously approved at our April meeting. And please note that um that will require an extra majority vote of the council as we are waiving our bid requirements. For the ULI.
Okay, I believe we are aware of the a cost at the April meeting as well, so. All right, does anybody have any questions regarding the resolution on the council?
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone in the audience have a question regarding the resolution? I'm not seeing any hands. Um, Nate, would you like to make?
Sure, I moved to the resolution R dash eleven dash twenty twenty three. To uh resolution of the mayor and council. The town of Kensington authorizing a contract with the Urban Land Institute to establish a technical advisory panel for strategic review of economic development, connectivity, and mobility improvements within town.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay.
Thank you, council.
Right, uh, number two?
Uh, here, um, council, uh, before you see this is resolution. Number R dash twelve dash twenty twenty three, resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington authorizing the extension of a contract with Nazario Construction Corporation, NZI. For concrete, asphalt paving, perky pave, storm drain, and related services. Please note that this um. Resolution will also require an extra majority vote of the council. We are piggybacking off of a bid through Tacoma Park. Where price adjustments were incurred last year. Um, our town attorney, so Ellen Ferguson, has reviewed the contract. We reviewed the documents. They were included in the public. Documents in addition to the council of justification for the price increase, it is for a two-year extension. And uh, we're asking for council's approval this evening.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions?
I have a question. Um, Matt, can you speak to the storm drain reconstruction renovation program with a one point five price tag?
Yeah, so we have to provide out an allocation of funds within and anticipate. It doesn't mean we're gonna use a belief provided in anticipation. The storm drain allocation funds are for, for example, if we move forward with the Oberon project. The storm drains will come out of that allocation. Um, the St. Paul Park storm drains that we're planning to put from university down to. Basically, the creek would come out of those funds, and then any laterals that we run up on Perry or Farragut or Dupont, depending on uh the test pits that we do. Um, they'll come out of, these are essentially the ARCA funds that.
Wondering.
Yeah, and these would be ARCA funds that we're allocating for some storm drain. I I will take other, one other note. In speaking with Brutus last week. They are gonna provide me with a rate sheet with their hydraulic engineer. Um, to begin doing a a very preliminary storm drain analysis. We advise them some of the issues that we're having specifically with the flat gate on Silver Creek and some of the backflow issues we're having into the fuel inlets.
Um, is this the flat gate? Is this the Flap Gate, Washington Street and?
So we're going to meet with them at some point, I'm not sure when, we haven't communicated that yet, and we'll do we'll either do an analysis, a full analysis, or what they'll do is come up with a concept plan or put, get us in the right track to kind of solve the flat gate issue for the council that doesn't know when the creek crests, there's a flat gate on our sea line in the storm drain and it closes, which causes the water to rise where we have field and yard inlets within easements of the town property, which has flooded residents in the past. We're trying to basically create a release valve down to the park. We don't know if we're going to be able to, the county and the states do a large plan to resolve that, so we'll talk with them, but this this will start the process.
Okay. I guess part of, thank you, that's really helpful, so if I understand correctly, then this is a ceiling that's on the contract, but yeah, as part of a broader plan around stormwater, we wanted to do some other kind of bid process.
It is unlikely that we use these funds to do this amount. If we if we agree to a large scale stormwater project, for example, if the state and county came back to us and agreed to do something in in the park.
Cabin Park.
Yep, then we would come back and basically we would, you know, put another resolution and divert the funds there.
Okay.
But for that, we would, we would do a RFP, a separate.
Yeah, we need their help for that project, I mean, if if we did something with the park for the amount of stormwater that we're getting from the state highway off Connecticut Avenue, and because, you know, the county's involved as well, we need their help in that project. But if we can't do that and we can't use the ARCA funds in that amount, we need them for other projects where we know we can get a return. So that's kind of what we're going to work with the hydraulic engineer and Brutus on, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure we preserve options for being able to do the broader plan and bidding process for bigger projects, and it sounds like you.
These would be basically just regular linear storm drains on places like Oberon, St. Paul. Larger scale projects will involve the county and the state, and they will actually probably bid the project out.
Right.
And what we would do is probably just release funds.
Okay, thank you.
Just a really, so one more question, since you raised the issue of the flooding the park, we talked about it before, as a as a plan flooding in nature based solution for 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 the managing the flood risk, is there a potential of getting county grants to help support that?
I hope so, yeah.
Because the Green Bank now has a resilience focus, they're the resilience authority for the county, they've been designated as that, so we might want to follow up with them about.
We're going to need the hydraulic division in Baltimore with state highway to take the lead on this.
Okay.
The park is county parks, we're also going to need to get Montgomery County involved, so working with Dan's going to be very important, as you, as I told you previously, and
Yeah.
and getting the state involved and kind of let them take the lead of the project, and then maybe we can just kind of distribute funds to offset the cost, so.
Any other comments from the council?
Alright, I would just say for people that aren't familiar with the piggybacking, it would be, I think, helpful to say that what we're doing here is we're letting Tacoma Park, that their larger bureaucracy conduct the process, and then we're piggybacking. We're taking their rates that they're paying and receiving those from the same contractor, there's there's no indication that the rates would be lower if we were to conduct our own RFP, and they're not going to cut us a break because we're a smaller municipality, in fact, they might, based on the volume, they might charge us more, and so that's the basis for piggybacking, is that?
Correct, not only that, the rates are from last year, a year ago with Tacoma Park, based on everything we're getting from engineering right now is we're not going to get a lower rate than fifteen, I think fifteen point six percent rate that was proposed to Tacoma Park last summer, so. I mean, even with our RFP out to Brutus, I mean, the low bid came in forty thousand more than we thought. I mean, we're not seeing low bids anywhere. So, okay, thank you.
And Darren's point and talking about the Brutus, I mean, the other thing gained is time, speed, is we can approve this tonight as opposed to many, many month process of writing.
Yeah, we have a contract on call.
Yeah.
And, you know, we have a long list for that.
Yep.
Does anyone in the audience have a question regarding this resolution?
I do.
Oh, sure, go ahead, can you go up to the to the microphone, just give your name and street?
Hello, my name is Peter Cogga, Woodfield Road. I'm just curious if the, you know, joint RFP process with Tacoma Park would mean that there's an opportunity or possibility that Tacoma Park would then utilize the entirety of the ceiling if we were looking at any future projects remaining on that contract.
Not not sure if I'm understanding.
It's not a joint, it's not a joint, I'm just explaining how the piggybacking works.
Yeah.
Our money's our money.
Yeah.
Tacoma Parks is theirs, it's just that they did a contracting action.
Right.
We're permitted to.
So they they put the bid out, Tacoma Park put the bid out, our charter and code allows us to take a publicly bid document and to, if the contractors willing, they can transfer those rates to us without us going through the same formal process. But there's no, there's no collaboration between us and Tacoma Park, other than we we essentially use their staff to get this price, so.
Right, I understand that we're not mixing funding, uh, funding, money between the two towns, I'm just curious if the contract would have a a ceiling that would cap the amount of work that the vendor would be able to you know, I guess invoice to either of the two towns, or if they're completely separate.
They're completely separate, and then within the resolution, there's caps on what, over the next two years, we can use out of the funding. Now, if it changes, the council, we can come back with a simple resolution and they could override that, but as of this evening, again, I don't anticipate using those funds, the amounts. But if we do, the council would have to take that up again.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Joe?
Yeah, I have a few questions about this resolution, first of all, when is this piggybacking going to end, I mean, this to your extension will will make it twelve years, total twelve years that NZI has been piggybacking and that we've been paying NZI for essentially no bid contracts. They they submitted a bid in twenty fourteen, and since then, they have never had to bid on this contract, I mean, that's a very favorable term for for a company that has had a record in this town of environmentally dubious work, and I am just really at a loss to understand why the council continues to piggyback, accept this piggyback arrangement from from this company. Why not put this out for bid as it was apparently in twenty fourteen, I'm looking at resolution number R eleven twenty fourteen, and it says quite clearly that the town has received a bid from NZI Construction Corporation. Why not do that every year or every other year?
I I'm not sure it's accurate to say that they didn't bid in the, it was a no bid contract, and Tacoma Park, I don't know how many vendors, contractors bid, but they all, you know, if we assume five of them bid, they were the low bidder in Tacoma Park. And so they would not be, we would not piggyback off of them had they not presented favorable rates to Tacoma Park in that process.
Yeah, but that's that's not the question I'm asking, why doesn't the town of Kensington control its own contractors rather than rely on what may or may not have happened in a larger municipality of Tacoma Park, I mean, we asked this company to submit a bid nine years ago, and it submitted a bid, so why not go back to that, rather than this year after year convenience, supposed convenience of piggybacking? I mean, this this ought to be sent out for bid, and in the terms of best practices, this this is not really the way to go, this should be, this should be, we should get bids on this as we did back in twenty fourteen.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
The second part of this is that they they do have a record, and I don't go out and monitor NZI's work across town, but I've seen them do work on the south side of town, and is really environmentally poor, it's very environmentally unfriendly. I've mentioned this in the past, I think that you, Mayor, and council member Bartram probably would recall my comments about their work over the years, and it's it's suspect, it's really suspect, and and to to do what they do in terms of tearing up the the root system of town trees on town on town property is is has been really very, very aggressive and very brutal, and I I really wish the council would be a little more inquisitive about this and 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 monitor the work, which leads me to a question, what is the performance requirement that the town of Kensington imposes on NZI Corporation? What are the performance requirements, I looked through the resolution, I didn't see anything specific along those lines.
Thank you, Joe, we see many comments.
Two-page resolution and has nothing to say about performance requirements.
There's a performance contract within the existing contract in twenty fourteen that we can abide by, we received many comments from NZI, including yours, most of them are favorable. Occasionally, things happen, as you are aware, when you're digging up concrete adjacent to tree roots. I will say for the specific item that you're talking about, none of those trees have died or even been sick or treated by the town, it's been at least five years since that sidewalk was put in. They're a very good contractor, we receive positive, I would say we see more positive feedback about them than negative, and I'll continue to support them as a contractor for the town in requesting this council support.
Yeah, that's all well and good, but why not ask them to to submit bids, why not put this out for bids, as you did with the 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 bridge?
That took took over a year.
So, Joe, as we.
This is the two-year contract.
This was bid out, it just wasn't bid out by the town, it is a lot easier for a municipality our size that has a couple of staff members to use the resources of a city like Tacoma Park or the city of Rockville to piggyback on bids that they've already gone through the process. Bidding does not get you the highest quality of work, we found that out with our Parapet and Toranda project. You find out with other projects, the bridge project, we tried to piggyback off an existing county contract. We actually did, we brought in the contractor WRA Engineering, and their rates were too high for us, so we had them work with us and put together a new RFP, and that's how we got Brutus and Associates. Again, that bid with Brutus came in forty thousand dollars more than we anticipated. One of the bids that came in on that came in over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars more than the estimate from Art WRA Engineering, so bidding doesn't necessarily get you a lower price. It doesn't get you quality, we have a known commodity with NZI Construction, I'm very happy with them, sometimes things happen, we address them, they address them directly with the residents. And again, I support them and the continuation of their contract in this town.
Yeah, going back to my original question, when's this piggybacking going to end, I mean, this is a sweetheart deal with a company that has a dubious environmental record, and it's it's something that's gone on now for since twenty fourteen. And in this resolution calls for another two years at two point one five million dollars, this is, this is a lot of money for for a company that has, you know, we have limited control over. And we don't know, unless you can tell us what you do in terms of your contacts with Tacoma Park officials in terms of their seeking bids for this for this work that they give to NZI. This is a sweetheart deal, and it's been going on altogether for too long.
I I would offer to check this, not 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 for this renewal, I want to go forward with the renewal tonight, but during the two-year period, I would be willing to look at other bids that have been accepted by Rockville, Gatorsburg, other municipalities, and just see for the rates, for the concrete rates, whatever it is, are we in a good ballpark? That way, if I I I feel like we are, feel like they had to have provided a reasonable bid in order to win the Tacoma Park contract in the first place, but it it doesn't hurt to to sort of check the work.
Didn't, that's a very good idea, but shouldn't that work, that that kind of inspection, that kind of review been done before the council was asked to approve a two point one five million dollar to your contract?
I I'm comfortable doing it prospectively.
After the fact?
No, before the next renewal.
For the next what?
Before the next renewal.
You may not be on the council then. You said that you in two years might want to turn this over to somebody else.
To your suggestion, there another just offer that with that, we also ask those jurisdictions their feedback on those contractors and their level of performance. Joe, I will offer, because there are a couple of things you said, one, hey, I appreciate that you kind of, you always keep our feet to the fire on this. To that, it, this really is, in a way, the piggybacking mechanism is a best practice, we are, the way I view it, just me solely, is it does allow us to leverage other municipalities for those things that are fairly routine, right, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, we've done a similar with trash, it lets us use their staff time to compile what would more or less be the same document and request, and then take those rates, which in this packet is an extensive amount of research of the prevailing construction rates, costs, diesel fuel rates, and other things that show the the increase in price. And I I feel very comfortable with it, the other thing I I know you you brought up is the environmental record, I will say simply, I I mean, I've been to all parts of the town, I've seen on the north side, south side, west side, that they take as great of care as they can to minimize any environmental impact, and I really believe that given that I spend my days traveling through the District of Columbia and into Arlington County, and Arlington is good. I will say the district, if you really want to see things get chopped up, go and see how it's done there, if you really want to see a dubious record, I, you know, that is a place where they just slap concrete down wherever they want with no regard for an impact, and I think that's very different here, it can't always be avoided, but I think every opportunity to avoid it, or at least to minimize it is taken, and so for that, I I, you know, I appreciate that out of our current vendor.
Yeah, I think that this this has to do with the town of Kensington, of course, and I think the competitive bids are the best practice, I I think that bid package writing is 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 also key in in getting the best possible bid, but to ask a company or to allow a company to have this kind of sweetheart deal year after year after year for for nine years now, it'll be ten next year, and then, you know, with an with an extension, you know, it's going to be eleven. For a two point one five million dollar contract, I think we should, we should, we can do better, we can do better, and we can write bid packages and expect competitive bids from from multiple contractors, and then then choose who's 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 the best best bidder out there, and, you know, I I, you know, I hear what you're saying, Connor, but I I'm persuaded that that the example of of Washington DC has much to say, much relevance to to the town of Kensington, but so my hope is that the the council will not have this super majority tonight in in approving this resolution.
Alright, thank you, Joe.
Resolution, make a motion?
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number R dash twelve dash twenty twenty three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
Okay, uh, last item on the agenda is public appearances, it's the opportunity to bring up anything that hasn't already, wasn't already on the agenda. Actually, I will start, I would like to thank my daughter for coming to a town meeting. My daughter has said, lives in Louisiana, she's serving in the United States Coast Guard, and she came to visit her mother, and she said, what can I do for you, mom? Come to the town meeting. So she did, she's a good daughter, so thank you, Caitlin, and thank you for the cupcakes that a few people that are online, we're here, would get to enjoy this game, let me. Yeah. Thank you. Alright, Joe?
Yeah, I'd like to make a few comments about non-competitive bidding. No, seriously, I have a question about the council meeting minutes, can you tell me where I can find them online, I I checked the council's the town of Kensington online site, and I see that the agenda and council packages go back to twenty eighteen. I find the the minutes, and it may be that I'm not looking in the right place, but I would love to be able to find the minutes of these meetings, and this is the recordings as well, are they somewhere in this?
Yep. Yep, there sure are.
Okay.
Joe, I put a link in the chat.
I got it. I got it. And how often do the minutes themselves? Uh I see that the minutes.
Once they're approved.
Yep, so the, so the main minutes were just approved tonight, and they'll be posted, but the minutes and the audio recordings. For the rest of the entire year are are there, and that site goes back to twenty twelve.
Okay, got it.
Yep. You just gotta just hit the plus signs to open up each of the years.
And the audio.
Understood, yeah, got it. Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Yes, and Joe, the audio recording is available almost immediately after the meeting. You don't have to wait a month for it.
And now it's Zoom, it's on YouTube, right, with MCC?
Yeah, that's on uh YouTube as well.
So now that any of the ones, since we've started Zoom, this is for everybody, but Joe, since you asked. Um because we have. The wonderful opportunity of MCC in the building, those are also posted onto YouTube, and I believe onto the MCC site, so you can. Rewatch the whole meeting um on those as well.
Okay, um. Yeah, the uh, we will, uh Alex will post the minutes that we just approved tonight, tomorrow, so they'll be up on the website. And then these meeting minutes will be posted at the Ju- after July meeting where we've approved them. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands, so if we can uh get a motion to, oh, I didn't want to talk about the July, uh no, the August meeting. Did you say you were gonna be out of town? You'll be out of town? Do, well, doing it on Zoom help, or you're like?
Yeah.
Seriously out of town?
Wow. Fourteenth is what it's currently scheduled for.
Mm-hmm. We will be meeting in person, obviously, in July because of the um council of social meeting as well as District Eighteen. So do we want to, I mean, we don't have to do it tonight, but uh.
I could, I could.
I think I will be here then. I'll be available on Zoom, but.
You can do Zoom on the eleven? I mean, on the ten.
Virtual, yeah, uh uh the fourteenth.
Oh, I've tried about, oh, I'm sorry, August, yes, fourteen. Okay, so um. Connor, you were.
I'm available.
You're available?
Yeah.
Okay, but let's just do it by Zoom.
Yep.
Okay. Alright, so we will have the August fourteenth meeting online only. Okay, good, alright. Oh, I do want to remind you, uh if you're gonna have an article um for the journal. That it's due at the end of the, I did send the email out, but it's due at the end of the week.
We do.
I think we should do it after we can describe the process and.
About soliciting the stakeholders.
You don't have time.
We can send that out. We can send something else out.
Yeah, I think we should do more of a just.
Yeah.
A wrap-up, a wrap-up of a article for the member.
Yeah.
That's due in August. Already thinking about the next one, you said?
No, the July for the July meeting, but I'm just saying we can also run eBlast or anything if you're trying to solicit additional help. Um and then we will have one in August, because we're gonna want to promote the late day break.
Yep, okay.
So that's usually the Friday after the town meeting. Okay. Alright, I think we're done. Alright, okay, I need a um motion to adjourn.
You can adjourn.
Alright, second.
Nice second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.